All right, we will now call the Board of Education September meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nicrom.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mrs. Sneeden.
Here.
Mr. Chaney.
Here. Now, would you please join me in saying my pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Every month, we begin the board meeting with the reading of the mission statement of the school district of Fort Atkinson, the reason why we're here. The school district of Fort Atkinson is committed to delivering quality opportunities and services each student needs to achieve his or her academic and personal potential. With that, we will go ahead and get into the meeting, beginning with comments from the audience on agenda or non-agenda items. If you'd like to make any comments, please approach the podium, give us your name and address, and keep it under three minutes. All right, seeing none, are there any sent to us to be read?
There are no submitted comments this month.
All right, well, great. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, Robert's Rules provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all of the board members well in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member for further discussion. This evening, there are several items. Item A, the regular meeting minutes dated August 20th, 2020. Item B, early graduation requests, times three. Item C, a personnel request, which is a resignation. Item D, board policy 7440.01, that is an update and that is a second reading. Also, item E, board policy 5200, an attendance update, and that is a first-read policy. Also, item F, gifts to the school district, those include school supplies for ready kids for school program, a monetary donation from Jeff Lewis, Gail Borland, and Connie Kepetsky for welding equipment and supplies. And then, item G, the treasurer's report and the payment of district bills.
Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda and have specific conversation on an item? Seeing no indication of that, then we can go ahead and entertain the motion to pass or to vote.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I approve. Well, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul and a seconded by Mrs. Sneeden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed? And we pass the consent agenda.
They have to.
Oh, it's a roll call, yes, I'm sorry, because there's, I realize.
Treasurer's report.
Yep. So, roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Yes.
Mrs. Sneeden.
Aye.
Mr. Nicrom.
Yes.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes. Now that passes. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. We will now hear from Dr. Abbott with the 2021 strategic plan update.
Well, again, good evening. We are very happy to be able to provide some information to the board to consider. As you may recall, we retired, or we gave you the final update in the last strategic plan in July, and the five bold steps, and provided the board information as to the work that had continued well through last spring, right up until we met in July. We almost also promised that we would come to you with some thoughts, or ideas, or a proposal, I suppose, as to how it is that we can move One Fort forward as we look at a new approach to strategic planning. So, in the past, we've been looking at moving forward from the five bold steps into the development of the new strategic plan. In the past, we had building on the accomplishments of the five bold step areas, integrating these areas into a results-based plan, and honoring community priorities moving forward. What we would be looking for is a period of board learning and reflection. We'd like to include a family and community engagement portion. We'd like to synthesize what it is that we see as a common vision, and then develop a new plan. And the idea is to move from that of being in continuous improvement, and in fact, continuous improvement is what we do day in and day out in the school district, and instead, looking for a strategic shift toward being more results-focused. So, as we know, big results require big ambitions, and this shift in focus would help us move forward in the school district of Fort Atkinson. So, everyone on the One Fort team has an important place on the strategic plan. Focusing on results is key, especially in areas prioritized by the state and federal accountability standards. Academics are measured in achievement and growth, and both are essential, as is comprehensive programming, and that is who makes us who we are here in Fort Atkinson. And finally, advancement is essential to thriving in a competitive environment, and I think we're seeing between open enrollment, and as people make choices as to where they live, and the quality of schools, that is an important piece of who and what it is that we do. So, we contend that there are two pillars to the potential improvement of One Fort's success. That of student learning in the area of English Language Arts and math, and we're saying that would be a strong core program. And I think a question would be, why are those singled? And they're singled out simply because that is what the accountability measures rest upon, both the federal and state government, that is primarily what is examined, and we do think that is a strong base or a strong core of programming here in Fort Atkinson. But then also, the second pillar of equal strength is the excellence in programming, and that is all of the other things that we are about. So, we contend that strong core, again, would attend to ideas of achievement, how are kids, how well do kids know what it is that we're asking them to learn? And then also, growth, how is it that kids are reacting, and what's that journey like for them in their learning process? And then, excellence in programming. We are proud in Fort Atkinson to have a very comprehensive program beyond math, beyond English Language Arts, our elective offerings, our program offerings. The board has supported continued growth in all of the areas that our students and our families have valued in Fort Atkinson, and in fact, have made us very attractive to students in other districts. And then, innovative advancement, always looking toward the future, and what is it that comes next? How is it that we can improve, and where is it that we go in the future? So, related to achievement, or strong core, we would say that we should be performing above the state average on the State of Wisconsin report card. We should be performing competitively with comparable districts, and we should be exceeding expectations as a district on that state report card as well. Related to growth, we would see evidence of continued growth, both on the state assessments by cohort groups, kids as they matriculate through our system, and then also the State of Wisconsin report card. We're looking to widen our distance from the state average on these state assessments, and students are meeting growth projections on MAP and also local measures. So, are kids going the distance that we believe they can go based on assessments and other information we have. And then, the second pillar, excellence in programming, we're considering comprehensive programming is our commitment to that of the whole child, programming that prepares and values all career pathways, knowing our students will choose many different options, perhaps right out of high school, or perhaps into some other learning programs. Programming that is sufficient to meet the academic and social emotional needs of all learners, you can't have one without the other, and I know this board is keenly aware of that. And then also, a commitment to equity in the opportunity and practice. And then, with innovative advancement, that passion for distinction, what is it that defines, what is it that one thinks of when they think of a One Fort learning community? Also, a commitment to contemporary practice and research-based programming, are we doing things the best we can, and in the most contemporary, research-based way possible? And then, alignment to rigorous standards and for the state's improvement areas. So, to get there, or to move towards this results base, what we would be looking at is spending this year working toward setting those goals later next summer, which is a natural cycle that I'll think you'll see as we move through here this evening. So, what we would ask the board to consider is, from October to December, considering district beliefs and guiding principles. The board could draft district beliefs and guiding principles, those drafts then could be shared with the staff, with the family and community for feedback, and then we would look to finalize those district beliefs and guiding principles first for other steps in this process to continue. And then, after the new year, January through March, we'd be looking at sharing those belief statements and guiding principles to inform a new district mission statement. And what we would look to do is work with you and others through a rigorous process to really come to terms with what is it that we believe our mission in the school district of Fort Atkinson is in 2021 and moving forward. A community task force, perhaps similar like the FAC, they consider in drafts and assists with that district mission, students, staff, family, and community will provide feedback, and that new district mission statement would be finalized then later next spring. Then, in April and May, we would consider the board, if you were interested, in informing a subcommittee to look at district branding. So, I think, as we all know, this is of critical importance to all organizations, and definitely here in Fort Atkinson as well. What is it, based on our beliefs, based on our guiding principles, based on our new mission, what is it that we believe we should be representing to the public and to our larger community as critical and vital and important here in the school district? And then also, a subcommittee of board members could look at a comprehensive data review and helps of establishing that baseline data. So, back to that table I shared a few minutes ago, all of those data points, all of those pieces of information are assimilated and can be assimilated, you know, in a very regular basis for you to consider to help us see, like, what is it that we think is a baseline that's reasonable in order to set goals then moving forward to illustrate that progress in the strategic plan? And then, branding that data review and baseline data established and shared again in April and May. In June and July, we would look at the results of the school year, and again, of those cohorts of students. We would ask for some assistance in determining what's the plan length. Are we looking for a multi-year plan? Are we looking for one-year goals? Are we looking for also goals that are perhaps longer? Determine what those overall planned goals may be, and then determine success indicators, and also a return on investment, and what are those benchmarks? So, what we'd be looking at in June and July is potentially finalizing an overall three-to-year, five-year district goal, overall goal, of which then we would have annual benchmarks towards the results we've been talking about. In July and September, the state data will be released at that time, which is when we typically do a data review with all of our building staff in July. That data, those data review teams, rather, would work with the new data as a result of this school year. The administrative team would then make recommendations to set incremental goals for the 2021-22 school year, and then sharing those goals with the One Fort team at convocation. So, what I would envision is this goal becoming the overarching umbrella of the work that we do in the district. In the strategic plan, the goal is known, it is something that everyone attends to, it is something that everyone is a part of, and everyone sees their piece in our organization towards attaining that goal. So, we'd be looking at, like, the official launch at the end of August as we welcome staff back to the new school year. So, as we look forward, we're thinking that we need to take the time to embrace the opportunity and think somewhat differently about strategic planning. And there's no judgment to pass strategic plans, and I think, as evidence of the quality of our school system, they have served us well. They are often centered on continuous improvement, how is it that we continue to improve on what we have done in the past, which is all work that will continue in order to reach a more results-oriented set of goals. So, toward what end is that continuous improvement geared? And that is where we would like to have you consider moving forward in a new way of strategic So, this quote is from the New Teacher Project, which is actually a mentor program and something that we've been participating in for a couple of years now. And it says, "Run every idea through a simple test. Will this help every student get back to grade level? And we don't mean ignoring social and emotional or other non-academic needs. Addressing those are core to setting students up for success. But more than anything else, you should prioritize accelerating students' learning by accelerating their exposure to grade-appropriate content, so that every student can get back to grade level." And it's not about catching people up, it's about moving kids forward, and that's really what results are about. It's not about crunching and then leaving a few behind, it's about moving every individual kid from point A to B and C and beyond as part of something bigger. So, success is no accident. It is hard work, it's perseverance, it's learning, it's studying, it's sacrifice, and most of all, love of what you are doing or learning to do. And that is what we would be looking to embrace through this new approach to strategic planning. So, I know this is the first that you've had this type of presentation on this topic. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time, or be able to get back to you with any questions that you might have at a later date.
I don't have any specific questions personally, but I, having been part of the board that kind of finished up one strategic plan, then part of a board that started a new one, and then finished that one, I'm really looking forward to this specific board and this administrative team setting up a new strategic plan. Like, I don't, I don't know that, this sounds geeky, but I'm excited about, I think that we've got a good, I think we've got a good team.
That's not geeky at all, you're talking to the wrong guy.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm talking to the wrong guy. But it's, you know, it's not something that I bring up in normal conversation, but I do, like, I get, you know, I get excited to think that we're going to be able to be, this is like the good part about some of the bad stuff we deal with, is that we get to take what we have heard and we have experienced from the community, and we have, we get to have that input on how this district moves forward, which I think is probably one of the coolest aspects of this gig.
You know, I think you've heard me stand here for a few months now and talk about seizing opportunity, and quite honestly, as much as the catalyst is something we would never want to have again, what better time is there for us to take a look, reflect, and really consider what is it that we value, how is it that we want to go about improving, and what is the package, what is the sum total of those efforts when we graduate kids at the end of their high school career? I think it would be a set of really engaging activities for you as board members to really have some deep-level conversations about what is it that you value, what is it that you think the priorities are, and then be able to engage the staff, be able to engage the community, and be able to engage others as we find consensus around what are those key statements. And sometimes, it may not even be lots of words, it may be, it may be thoughts, it may be ideas, or it may be products. But then also, I think, the mission statement, and certainly there's nothing wrong with the mission, it's served us very well, and I guess it's possible we'd end up with the same, but I think it is a process that, when you work through, it causes some great dialogue, and it really gives people pause to think in sort of the craziness that we all operate in typically.
Yeah, what I'm most looking forward to, obviously, we're all pretty aware of the five bold steps, but going from that to a results-based development, it helps me kind of put tangible where we're going with things, and I imagine everybody else in the district got an understanding of the measuring stick that we're, we're all measured upon, right? So, I'm certainly excited to see that, and then as this progresses for the next roughly year or so, so thank you.
Well, I'm hoping that you saw at least that first blush, that with being results-focused is the acknowledgement that we need to continue the comprehensive approach that we have to all of our students' needs and interests as well. So, this isn't about cutthroat anything, it is about rising to the occasion, to the accountability measures that we are held to, but that journey is far more complicated than just zeroing in on two content areas.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions or conversation comments? Looking forward to it, thank you.
All right, so if it's already a few, then no surprises, but we'll go ahead. We have a meeting set next week, and we'll start putting together some ideas for structures for you to consider as we try to shift, as much as we're COVID everything right now, it really will be nice to be able to work on some things that are more forward-oriented like this, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. We will now hear the 2020 summer, summer school program report, and Mrs. Oakley will give us that report.
Well, it's always my pleasure to give the summer school report. It was a very interesting summer, so it feels a little different than it normally does when I'm down, but I'm excited to share our summer school 2020 journey with you this Do I drive here, or do I?
Turn on the sun.
Woo-hoo, all right. I thought it would be nice to start looking back to what we, we ended up calling Phase One of 2020 Summer School. Just to remind us all, summer school registration, priority registration was scheduled to happen right around the time we had a closure, so at that time, if anyone remembers, we delayed the priority registration until we determined what was going on with the closure, and we were sure at that time this was just a quickly passing phase. So, once we realized that we were not going to be through the pandemic by the start of summer, we determined that all of our courses for Phase One needed to be virtual. At that time, we launched a late May priority registration, and I had 81 staff members willing to teach summer school. So, I really think, if you remember back to my staff who jumped into teaching for One Fort at home and learned how to do Zoom and Google Classroom, to think that I had that many staff members who were that committed to the summer school programming we offer our community, and were willing to do that virtually for three-plus weeks, I was really proud of that team. We launched the priority registration with 50 course offerings for elementary, 26 course offerings, those three, those three-plus full-week sessions for middle school, 10 middle school camp options, 10 high school camp options, and 14 credit recovery options. As we received our registrations for Phase One, we created criteria to figure out what was making it viable to run a Phase One course. So, for our K-8 traditional courses that were the three-plus weeks in length, if you recall, our kids have an eight o'clock, nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock schedule. So, we early on said we wanted to be able to offer a full four-period schedule for any student who wanted one. We also needed to have enough periods for teachers to teach to make it worth their time to teach. Thinking through the logistics without getting too deep into scheduling, nobody is going to want to teach one section of summer school that starts at 11 o'clock and only runs for 50 minutes. So, we really had to work through what was viable, we had to have enough students in a class to engage in meaningful activities, we wanted to make sure we were being financially responsible for the district to not run the program at a deficit. We also had some concerns about virtual fatigue at that time, as enrollment was declining in One Fort at Home, and we, as we were approaching the end of the year. So, on May 29th, we made the very difficult decision to cancel that K-8 Phase One summer school. And then, at the, so you can see, that's the first two bullets on this slide. We did run five out of 10 middle school camp options, six out of 10 high school camp options, and some of those are the same camp that were open to the holes, to middle school and high school students. They ran virtually, as well as we shifted our high school credit recovery options. Dan Halverson, Adam Rousseau, and Brad Geffer worked with their team to transition the high school credit recovery program to full virtual, and that became our Phase One offerings, which ran from June 15th through July 10th. We had, as a whole, 247 students participate in Phase One summer school. So, even though we canceled our, which really is our meat-and-potatoes core of summer school many times, we still had 247 students register, so we were really proud of that. 179 were high school students, 68 were middle school students in Phase One. So, as we approached Phase Two, I'll remember the day that my colleague Rachel Allard, who is my amazing support behind summer school, we made the realization, like, wow, we're going to have to do priority registration again. So, we had to gear up to do two registrations, and we started a Phase Two that started July 13th, and Phase Two really for us was that looking-forward stage. At that time, we opened the door, if you remember, for our buildings to be open and our students to come into our buildings. It was the first time we had an opportunity to try on new safety protocols with older learners, and at that time, we did prioritize that Phase Two was for grades five through 12, just to make sure that we had students who had a little bit more cognizance of the importance of the safety procedures as we were learning how they operated. I will say that these teachers were our pioneers. We spent lots of time on the phone with them, talking through how to make things work, looking at their national organizations for things like music, orchestra, physical education, classes that could be outside, working through what is reasonable for safety protocols and guidelines for courses to still have fun opportunities for students, but to align to the new safety protocols that we were all just figuring out. So, Phase Two really for us became the test run, also to see how did our students comply with the safety guidelines? Were we having lots of battles over masks or face coverings? Were students being respectful of physical distancing? So, it was, it was a really great opportunity for not only us to engage in the development of these processes, but to see how students responded to them. As far as safety guidelines go, this was our first shot, so back in July, we leaned heavily on the Jefferson County Health Department's blueprint for reopening Jefferson County and the Wisconsin Badger Bounce Act Plan to come up with some guidelines for our students in summer school, sharing those with families for the first time, answering questions about what those meant, safety checklist before students came to school. So, we really had a lot of opportunity to learn, parents were outstanding, kids were outstanding, everyone was so thrilled to be back in a building and back together again. I think they pretty much would have done anything we asked if they could just be there. So, as far as our middle school camps, and you can see, this is the list of what we ran in Phase Two, so we did run the middle school show choir, we ran a beginning orchestra camp, we ran a AMP 56, which is a gifted and talented acceleration program for math, we ran angler education, canoeing and kayaking, a creative writing camp, a debate camp, gamers club, an intro to STEAM camp, jumpstart to band, and a summer school orchestra camp. So, a really nice variety of camps for our older, for our middle school, upper elementary and middle school students. At the high school, we ran GT, or Gifted and Talented Algebra II Summer Acceleration, full virtual. We also offered Angler Ed to the high school students, we offered three AP, what we call boot camps, or summer sessions for students who are heading into AP courses, and it's an opportunity to get a jumpstart on those courses. They were offered some in-person, some virtual. Again, the canoeing and kayaking, the creative writing, the debate, gamers camps were all open to high school students and attended as well. Link Crew, we had an opportunity to work with the Link Crew leaders to revision what Link Crew would look like, which is our freshman orientation program we do at the high school. South House Street Singers, our show choir, worked through the complexities of singing in global pandemic. We ran strength, speed, and conditioning, and that was really a great learning experience. So, the, so the students who were interested in doing athletic kind of activities and working out were able to get reconnected to that activity, as well as summer orchestra. So, we ended up with 256 students in Phase Two Summer So we ended up with 256 students in Phase Two Summer School. You can see the majority of those were high school students, 78 middle school students and 17 elementary students who were all in grade five because those, and that was really in the music camps. We prior, we did open up to grade five for the music camps because the launch of orchestra and band was really compromised by the closure. So I thought it'd be just nice to show a couple of quick pictures of what Summer School looked like in Phase Two. So you can see here is our Jump Start to Band. Notice that every student, so Jump Start to Band is a quick introduction to all the bands, instruments. We partnered with Breeber, who brought an individual instrument for every student. So you can see that they have all the instruments for them to try out next to them and donated the cleaning of those instruments for us. So really nice. You can see our Angler Ed. I don't know if you noticed, we had a couple pictures in the paper this summer where we, some kids caught some really big fish. And I was proud, all the pictures had those kids in their face coverings and big smiles underneath that you can tell from catching fish.
I mean, that wasn't your virtual.
No, that was, yeah. That was, that was a little bit in person, right? We had a great partnership with the Bark River Fry Hatchery and the bait box, Rock River Bait Box. They really did some nice partnerships, actually let students get dropped off there and worked with students to get access to bait and things and equipment. Here is the orchestra camp, and I thought it would be nice to give a quick, Mr. Callaway sent me a quick, I don't know, DJ, can I click this from the clicker? So I won't play all three minutes of it, but I thought it was a nice illustration of the fact of creative use of space. You can notice that they're in the high school auditorium. You can see that they're social distanced and you can see the amazing things that they were able to do even with social distance masked and precautions. So really some nice Summer School experiences for our kids.
I believe they actually had a virtual audition in the back as well. It was really a great experience.
Our, our Phase Two Summer School teachers were outstanding. So in a nutshell, overall, I just, this would be a comparison to last year. We did not offer the enrichment classes we typically do at the elementary, middle school level or the intervention courses that we typically do. We did offer all of our credit recovery options with one less, and that was due to the fact we didn't need it. And we ended up with a total of 23 individual camps that were accessed both by middle school and high school students as compared to 51 the prior year with 41 total offerings as compared to 147 in 2019. So given all of the challenges, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we got to that place. So before I take questions, I just really want to take a moment to recognize the innovative teachers who really developed those virtual courses for Phase One and were willing to offer that opportunity to students early in, in the summer, as well as the tech department who just rose to the occasion to support our virtual Summer School learners all summer. The brave teachers who taught Phase Two and really helped the district pave the way to in-person instruction. I can't thank the custodial staff or the middle school, high school, summer school principals anymore for, they were so outstanding in how they prepared their buildings and really implemented those safety guidelines for the first time with our older students during Phase Two. Families and students who were willing to take a risk on something different. And lastly, my team who supported a summer like never before. So I just thank you to all of those, those people who made those opportunities for our students to happen this summer. So I can answer any questions you might have about Summer 2020.
So I'm curious to understand a little bit more about, obviously, Summer School. There's, you know, two phases to it, but what type of things did you learn kind of leading into the school year as we reopened with everybody that we were able to kind of gain knowledge? I imagine there was quite a bit that we liked, had some aha moments, right?
Yeah. Oh, yes. Yes. So things like, when would we need to, what, what safety precautions felt okay? Like, so once we, I talked with every Summer School teacher, so did Matt or Dan, Ad and, Brad and Adam.
You gotta give those guys a brand of Lina.
That's not good, right? And just started to say like, how did it feel? Did it feel safe? Did, did you as a teacher feel safe? How did the students do? Things like, we recognized students were very conscientious about physical distancing. Whatever guidelines we gave, they followed. Asked teachers to get a sense, we worked through a lot of issues with mirrored learning for the first time. For example, the orchestra example, you saw he had virtual students and in-person students. So we troubleshooted a bunch of sound issues because we recognized that there was a little bit of a delay in Zoom and that the kids at home who were playing their instruments weren't in sync with, so we really had that opportunity that we wouldn't have been able to vet prior to the school year. We worked through some of the technology that led us into mirrored learning. So the dock cams and the ear sets, we recognized that some of the kids in Phase Two Summer School couldn't hear the teacher. So they were joining as, as remote students and their peers were in person and they couldn't hear the teacher as well. So those are all ways that this really paved and did the foundation for us. So even though Phase Two probably wasn't near as robust as some of the Summer School program we've offered in the past, it was such a blessing for us to get our feet wet and really try on some of this before we opened our doors for all of our students in the fall.
Yeah. That's great for taking that on. I appreciate that. That's awesome.
Thanks.
I would say it informed the confidence that we had in working with you and making decisions about the fall.
Yes.
That was the difference.
Thanks.
Mrs. Oakley, how many teachers do we have in a non-pandemic year?
Oh, good question.
Roughly? We had 81, right, this year?
I had, I had 81 who were willing to teach Phase One. I'm guessing I usually run just shy of 150 total.
That's what I thought.
So, and about 40% of those are not current employees. So we did make the distinction that anyone who did Phase Two had to be a current employee just because we didn't, we didn't want to navigate and invest in someone who wasn't going to be with us in the fall. So I have a whole crew of Summer School teachers who return annually from other districts who did not come this year because of the way it was structured. But it was, it, we have, it was hard for some people to lose that, that income.
Yeah.
And I did my best that the ones who felt most concerned had the opportunity regardless of their typical Summer School course to develop a camp in Phase Two if they wished. So some of those that felt most strongly about wanting, needing to supplement that income had an opportunity to do so. Others really indicated, you know what, maybe it was a blessing in disguise to have a summer to regroup and rejuvenate after One Fort at Home, and it turned out to be an okay circumstance for them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just say, there are very few boards of education that are receiving reports on Summer School. Very few districts tackled that challenge. Very few districts had the support, the infrastructure, the interest, the creativity and on down the line to do what we did. And certainly thank you and thank your team. We may not have run Phase One, but we tried Phase One. And I can't think of another district that did. And part of that was about hope. Part of that was about planning and part of that was best information at the time. But all of the steps that you and your team took got us to the point where it yielded the results that we have. And while Summer School is about student count and it is about bottom line budgets and everything else, I, this was important enough to do if none of that even existed. And I think that was the spirit that came out of it. So I, I think that's, that's really incredible. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Abbott.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. And we will now move on to the, well, we, we're not going to do the advanced placement. We're not going to make.
Yeah, I will just make mention though that Mr. Halverson has prepared a very in-depth report related to advanced placement exam results from the spring. It is in your board packet. I know you all reviewed it as we talked through it. And also it is available in board docs, as are all of the presentations this evening. Mr. Halverson is here should you have any questions for him. In general, things were looking very positive. Our students performed well. It was clearly an unusual, along with everything else, based on COVID. It also stretched some of the assessment techniques and strategies for those AP courses as well to be offering virtual.
Suppose say no. And that passes. All right. So now we're moving to what, what might be the weightiest or the actual longest document that we were provided in packet, which is the radon testing survey results, which literally have every minute detail.
Yes. If you would like to know the radon level of the closet in room B42 at the high school, we would have that information for you. Mr. Carter put together a very detailed report for you regarding the outcome of our radon testing results that took place last year. It is a requirement for districts. He chose to get us in the process sooner than later, which I think was very advantageous. We did have a company come in and perform those tests and as you know by the report and the community can see if they'd like in board docs, it was extremely comprehensive. And we were also very pleased that all six of our buildings were well below the thresholds for concerns related to radon.
Does anybody have any questions other than why, why I was so detailed about the radon testing results?
I guess my only question would be, what is the, I guess, what's the long-term, like, is this good for five years, 10 years? Is, do you guys have a sense of like how long that validates those results or?
Yeah, we, we had some conversations about it. This has been done every so many years and staying in front of the CDC fire control. They basically have that.
So. It's every five years, I think, right?
What's that?
It's every five years that they recommended it?
You even talked about beyond 10 years if it's not recommended.
Oh. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. We will now move on to item D, the school opening update, and that is again, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, we did it. We opened school. It didn't feel like it was going to happen. We knew we could and, and we did. We really have had an incredibly rewarding, I think is a good word for start to the school year, both in-person and for our virtual students and families at home. They always say when you're wearing masks and you're having your picture taken that your eyes show your smile, and I think if you look at these pictures closely, they are a testament to the fact that kids and families were in fact very excited to be back in our buildings. They were very excited from day one. I was in and out of classrooms, as were many, many people, watching kids log in virtually and be welcomed into those learning environments as well. It really has been an amazing experience after a very tumultuous six months for us to once again be doing what we do best, which is teaching and learning with our students. I thought the community and the district would be interested. This data was pulled yesterday, so it does vary a little bit from day to day. But we do have just shy of 24% of our kids in a virtual learning environment and about 76% then in the in-person environment. One of the things I'd like to say is thank you to our One Fort community. When the board met in August, we reaffirmed opening the school year with two learning formats. We asked for two additional days to work with teachers and allow teachers to prepare for that first day. We always said like, you get one first day and you've got to bang that right out of the park. With the board's support, those two days proved to be simply invaluable for all district employees as we ramped up to welcome our students for the first day on September 3rd. So thank you. I'm guessing that some may believe that with our doors now open and kids actively participating in both in-person or virtual learning, that most of the heavy lifting is done. And while we view the opening of our schools this year as successful, some of the items on our to-do list from last month have been replaced by a never-ending what comes next, especially when you're operating schools during a time of a pandemic. And I thought it might be easiest to break down what some of the main or major items are in each area of our learning community operations. Clearly, the highlights I'm sharing this evening are certainly not all-inclusive and they're very topical at best, but I simply wanted to, I simply wanted to provide the board a larger idea of the status, the next steps, the challenges, and the forward thinking occurring in each area of our district. So again, at a bird's eye level in teaching and learning, in the area of instruction, we're supporting the One Fort Success Team and the new PLC structure in my presentation, supporting the launch of the new elementary math program, certainly a big undertaking, supporting new pedagogy learning with the launch of one-to-one technology, launching of the K-5 ELA Vision and Language Workshop Teams, teacher work teams, modifying intervention and Gifted and Talented programming for blended learning. How is it that we continue and evolve our services available to students? Substitute teacher training for mirrored learning. With mirrored learning comes a number of different issues related to substitutes and what to do when teachers are gone, or we have some issues that pop up, things that sound simple that are far more complex. Fall universal screening in the area of reading and math. And then also, we can't lose track of the state and federal compliance, aligning with the educator effectiveness or the certified staff evaluation process to mirrored learning. Submission of the ESSR, you may recall, that's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant that also included private school allocations. And, you know, I have to say, this is one of the things that the news or the media or whoever portrayed as a fairly easy process for schools to navigate, and it was anything but. It was extremely complicated and a due date that was scary but happy to see passed a little earlier this week. And research on state of Wisconsin statute flexibility provisions for 2020 and 2021. What is it that we might need some flexibility with in the way that we're operating this year? And then in the area of special education and pupil services, meeting the individual student needs remains the highest priority for both special education and pupil services. Providing continuity of learning for our most fragile learners continues to be the focus of our staff as they work and grow their skills in a blended learning or mirrored learning format. Additionally, our school health team has created and is managing the COVID health information to ensure the safety of both our students and our staff. As we all navigate this increasingly complex year, the mental health and wellness of our students as well as our staff are an area of continued focus. In the area of human resources, another area or division that is extremely busy for us, there's many different items underway. Staff absence tracking procedures. So just as an example, this is the idea of ensuring that when all staff are following the new reporting guidelines, which help us track symptoms or reasons for absences and compliance with the Jefferson County Health Department. This process also helps us keep track of who may be in the pipeline as a possible case, those who are awaiting test results and circumstances that could lead to eligibility or leave options under some of the federal leave opportunities for staff. So things like this that did not exist before that have needed to be enacted in just over the past couple of weeks. Also, staff accommodations and leave requests, compliance with the new federal leave laws, which the board learned from our attorney a few weeks ago are very, very complicated. Our continuing staffing needs, both those that come with the beginning of a new school year as well as exacerbated under our times with COVID. Substitute needs and training and the COVID-19 Handbook Addendum, things that the board will be looking at as we continue to work with staff under these new circumstances throughout the year. In the area of technology, internet access at home. A great number of families in our community who choose to, who chose rather to go virtual do not have access to the internet. The district procured a great deal of hotspots from various carriers to accommodate those students, and the district will continue to make every effort to help those families remain connected should they need to go. remain connected should they need to go virtual and they are choosing to be in-person at this time. Also, mirrored learning. Managing a classroom with two audiences, virtual as well as in-person right out of the gate, is not intuitive. It's new. It's filled with technical nuances and challenges that take time to become comfortable with. As our educators find their routine, we are very excited about how technology is being integrated into the classroom to engage all of our kids, no matter where they are. As well as ancillary services, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago with a board motion, the district is utilizing many great products to support our educational efforts, from Zoom to Screencastify to the entire Google for Education suite. We have many unique ways to build on the unique strengths of our students. It will be important for us to continue to tweak and hone our network infrastructure to ensure those availability of products are consistent for students. And then security. As we are quick to stand up new systems, modifying existing infrastructure and ultimately allowing more access from outside in, our technical security must be firm. It's so easy to take shortcuts for the sake of ease that can quickly snowball into a very vulnerable position. Keeping security in the forefront of all of our decisions is still the utmost importance. I feel like there should be a bullet that just says responding to technical needs on an ongoing basis as well. Business services, definitely busy in that part of our operation as well. As I believe everyone is aware, the federal government switched to free meals for all people, 18 and under. So with that change came some very rapid changes in that part of student nutrition. A regular onsite feeding and weekly meal box pickup is continuing and evolving rapidly. We were able to procure the Jones refrigerated truck, and they have been so clear that they do not want any recognition. But Jones has essentially donated the use and the maintenance and everything related to a refrigerator truck since March. And then when we changed things up, thinking that there wasn't going to be the free feeding program, the truck went away. And as soon as that came back, that truck was back. And the outpouring of concern and support from this community is just, this never ceases to amaze me. We've also rented a semi-trailer for storage. We're just out of space. I mean, we're feeding, you know, hundreds of thousands of meals in a kitchen and in food spaces that just were not designed for that type of volume. Also, transportation. We have the same number of buses running, but we have fewer kids. And the challenge is obviously when riders switch learning formats or stay home or come back. Double Three has done a marvelous job of working with us and being very fluid and responsive to needs. We had a need come out of the blue today that will need to take place tomorrow, and they're Johnny on the spot helping us work through what that would look like. As well as then the financial outlook, the 2019-20 was better than budgeted for the state. Possibly, there would not be a budget repair bill, I think, depending on who you ask and what day. That may be the case. I was in a meeting today and the governor spoke, and you sort of hear both sides there. And then the 2021-23 state biennial budget likely will be challenging. So definitely, we are starting to look very aggressively at as how is it that the district can position itself best for the long term. And then safety and risk management. Intruder drills are still required, although they will be conducted differently. Options-based response training for new staff this fall will also take place, again, looking differently. And those are all parts of the safety grant from the state, so those are requirements for us as well. In buildings and grounds, the HVAC COVID mitigation strategies are in full swing. And this is an area that I've heard questions about, and I know you have as well, as HVAC has been discussed out and about. We've increased MERV counts, which is new language for me, and HEPA to meet static pressure and provide the most protection possible. Air exchange for outside air is running at a maximum and has been. And also chlorine dioxide fogging is scheduled multiple rounds a week during unoccupied times. Also, buildings and grounds, COVID cleaning is being tracked with our new facilities advisor platform daily for all spaces within our buildings. Working to fill vacancies in that department, everyone continues to pitch in and find a rhythm that is new, obviously with COVID, with the new cleaning processes and procedures. Additional sprayers and equipment units have been ordered to assist with the efficiency and timing of those needs as well. And then a continued effort for us is finding enough space for lunch, particularly in our middle school and high school, but also in our elementary schools. They have been working hard to open up tenting outside and then finding what to do when tenting isn't possible outside. I know the board is aware, we've been very frustrated and disappointed that we're not allowed to have sides on our tent purportedly because of some state requirements, but it does make it very limiting as to when students are able to access that space. And frankly, that space isn't nice to have, that space is need to have. You have so many kids available to eat lunch during certain times, and that's what it is. So we continue to try to navigate what are some next options with that. And then in communications, continuing to share information from the Jefferson County Health Department with the school district for Atkinson staff and families in a timely manner. Those things continue to change, as do our materials. Updating our school district, reopening handbook with information as it becomes available, updating the Fall 2020 webpage consistently to reflect all of the changes as things happen sort of on a daily basis, it seems, of late. Monitor and respond to inquiries on social media. Social media is alive and well and continues to be an active part of who and what we are. And then developing future communications to support immediate and emerging needs, similar to those that were immediately emerging in today's needs. So we've been successful to date, yet there are some challenges that I just, error and pragmatism, I think, are important to share with the community as well. This is essentially like the first year of teaching for everyone, all at the same time. And if you're a teacher, we've all had first years of teaching, and even if they're good years, there are years that you don't necessarily want to repeat later in your career. And really, what we are doing, what COVID has necessitated, albeit we will come out better on the other side, it truly is a first year of teaching for all of our teachers all at once. Perfectionism is very hard to overcome, and I think some of the frustration I've heard from some teachers is understanding their own level of perfection is not possible right now. And we have certainly not conveyed that expectation to anyone. But this is a group, school staff as a whole, are groups of people who work hard and they want the best and they know what they're capable of, and it's frustrating when you can't have that day one. So we've been very consistent in our messaging that we do not have those levels of expectation of perfection, and we've been trying to help people realize that small steps towards the greater good are just as great as the quantum leaps that maybe some other people have made. There are no routines, or there's no efficiencies, and there's no fallbacks as there were in the past. This is all new for everyone. Support for virtual learners varies greatly, and we are finding that in some households, students have adequate, if not very, active support for their learning platform. And in other cases, particularly with some of our younger learners, maybe they don't have the support that they need to maximize or leverage that learning platform or provide the teacher in the physical classroom what they need to be successful, or as successful as they'd like perhaps better said, with those students as well. So those are some things we're working through. And then understanding the implications for different developmental age groups, as I was just mentioning. So we're hearing stories of great excitement and success, along with some stories of exhaustion and struggles with mirrored learning. And I'm not sure there's a ton in between, but there's an awful lot of really, really good teaching and learning happening in both sides of that equation. It's a bit like I was saying on the last slide, but we are seeing some incredible work, some incredible effort, and some incredible results. So we're definitely in a spot where we're sprinting a marathon. And the weight of a pandemic does impact everyone inside and outside of our workplace in different ways. And in addition to all of the new, all of our staff and all of us continue to have the same type of impacts that everyone else in our larger community does as well. We're living in a pandemic which is unprecedented. Levels of acceptance varies, and we need to remember that we're only 10 days in. It feels a little later in the school year than it actually is, but we're 10 instructional days in. So getting back to that perfection, it's just not going to happen, nor is it expected. And we've also proactively adjusted some of our expectations. So knowing what falls typically look like for our teachers or students in classrooms, we proactively made some adjustments in our efforts to adopt or adapt, accommodate some of the new that I've been talking about. We encourage social-emotional engagement the first days of school, rather than solely hitting the books immediately. We really pushed hard on making connections, building relationships, and getting back with kids being the most important thing. Reduced instructional English Language Arts and Math units in elementary schools for the first quarter. That's not about lessening expectations, but that's about curricular coverage and density and being able to play with that over the course of the year as opposed to boom, this is what all needs to happen in September and October. We've been adding technology integration support staff and reallocating some staff positions. We've reallocated our intervention staff to support students and other teachers in different places. We've eliminated pull-out professional learning for teaching staff this fall, so there are no subs required as we're taking teachers to do some of the professional learning, which is also a nod and a thank you for having Monday be a full day of professional learning for staff, which is very much needed. And modified our assessment program expectations as well as timing throughout the course of the year throughout the district. So I've heard from a few staff that maybe we're being a little too positive, and I'm not sure that that's the case at all. I think it's more about being proud of the work that so many are doing, and for some, at a great cost. We are doing the best we can at this point in time, and people, they are doing their best, and that's really all that we can ask. Just as I don't think that it's possible for me to be too positive, what I am sure of is that I can't be more proud of our teachers, our staff, our families, and our kids as they came back to us just 10 days ago. One of the other areas that we've been excited about, which the board and the community have heard about before, was the beginning of the Forward Success Teams. The One Fort Forward Success Teams is that teacher-leader structure that we have built on top and using the professional learning community's framework so that teachers have more immediate connections with one another to support them in some of these changes related to mirrored learning and some of the new teaching and learning that's going on in our classrooms. So the One Fort PLC vision for 2020 and beyond is, one, committing to ensuring that all students learn through collaborative and interdependent practices; two, building capacity of each team member to help everyone become stronger educators; three, be a living and breathing part of the work we do each and every day; four, embracing professional learning as an opportunity to try something new; then being number five, results-oriented; and six, value the time that we have together, prioritizing its best use to achieve those goals; believing that all students belong to all teachers; working collectively to multiply the impact we have on student learning to serve as strong K-12 system that helps students be career, college, and life-ready; and number nine, not operating in silos across the classrooms or schools. The success team leaders, I believe there are 27, followed up, or facilitated, excuse me, follow-up collaboration meetings on September 14th. There is a one hour of professional learning and collaboration to further support the new learning that took place in August. So all certified staff were provided with professional text to support the one-on-one device initiative, as well as to develop a deeper understanding of blended learning, pedagogy, and the new ed tech tools. So the Chromebook Infused Classroom is a book that all of our certified staff now have and is something that's being used as a reference in their learning throughout this work together. I feel like I missed one. So we have 25 district PLC teams spanning the K-12 across all of our content areas. 25 success team leaders, they facilitated those first meetings with their PLCs. That was back on Tuesday, August 25th. So three hours of professional learning and collaboration on the format of mirrored learning and pedagogy of blended learning. And then facilitated those connections, the engagement and collaboration of in-person and remote learners with offline and online activities, utilizing Zoom and integrated ed tech tools like Google Jamboard, Padlet, and more. So as you can see, we built from that work in August into what I was just speaking of in September. And then what's next? September 21st, which is the Monday that is now a full day of PD, we have three and a half hours of PLC implementation time, where all certified staff will be provided with collaboration time with their PLC, their professional learning community, to implement new learning aligned to the needs of their PLC to support mirrored learning, blended learning, and new ed tech. Essentially, each of those PLCs, those 25 groups, were able to define their highest levels of need and then frame that time that they have to work together on Monday to achieve those goals. And then individualized PLC support. All 25 success team leaders will have monthly one-on-one coaching support meetings to specifically work on and address needs specific to their PLC. So we're trying to feed everyone, and we're also trying to feed those leaders, both in their leadership as well as their knowledge banks as well. So looking forward to quarter two, as you know, parents will have the opportunity to switch learning formats if they so choose. The process and the procedures for that will follow. But I did want to note, if we do have a significant uptick in the number of in-person learners, we will have a space problem in some areas. The board may need to consider whether or not to preserve our goal of three-foot physical distancing to allow for more in-person students. So there's no alarm bell to ring here, but I just do want to make clear that we are honoring the mitigation strategies and structures that we said we would have in place to begin the school year. I do believe that we will have some virtual or remote learners wanting to join us back in their classrooms, which of course we'd like to accommodate. But this is something that we will need to consider, particularly in some cases regarding space. Then I also wanted to provide some updates from the Jefferson County COVID-19 data. There has been an increase in community spread over the past month, and while this may be appearing to level off, it is so much higher than it has been in the past. Here we see Jefferson County's daily positive test rates as a percentage of positive tests. So as you can see, we've been bouncing around a little. And if you go to the dashboard, which of course we encourage everyone to do, you'll see that they continue to add additional data elements in response to people's requests or questions and trying to make things a little bit more clear to understand. So the data, I do think, has become much more user-friendly and usable as we move forward through these times. Next is the COVID cases from March through just a couple of days ago, September 14th, by age group. So you can see the smallest group in 80-plus, the next being 0-17, and then 18-34 is where there's really been a pop, especially recently, I believe, if we looked at this broken down week to week or month to month. And then the average county case rate per 100,000. So as you recall, this is the statistics that may be viewed as the most important when it comes to continuing school operations. So when we met last, we talked about the transition to the Harvard model, or the sort of the color scheme of how is it that schools operate. And you'll see that we are currently at 11.8. So you can see that, you know, things have moved around a little bit. So at 11.8, as Jefferson County accepted the Harvard model, the positive cases per 100,000 continues to have us in the orange level of operation with 11.8, which was down from last week at 16.5. Even with fluctuation from week to week, the statistics have most likely, will most likely keep us in orange for some time. It may be that the county overall statistics are not the reason for us to close a school or our district for a period of time. It may be more likely that it's related to a positive case or multiple cases within a school or our schools. As we are aware, Jefferson County has provided guidance for districts to consider. And speaking of Jefferson County's guidance, and we're in the midst of this now, I did want to talk a little bit more. We did learn since we last met that school districts are responsible for doing the close contact tracing for positive cases in schools, as well as initial notification to staff and families of the need of quarantine. And this is something I'll acknowledge that I've pushed back on because we do not necessarily have the staff and resources to do this. And I struggle with us being the first point of contact for families when it comes to issues of public health. That said, and I think at this point it's no secret, we've had a couple of positive cases in two different buildings this week, and we've been activating these processes. And the amount of time and dedicated effort dedicated effort it takes to work through these processes, to identify close contacts, but then also to work through the communication structures, is extensive. It's very extensive, and I don't see that changing anytime soon.
We could always ask for a little grace in the community in kind of, I don't mean to interrupt, but
No.
We could ask for a little grace in the community in that we're, first of all, we're doing something that's way out of the spectrum of our professions, or your professions. But not only that, but we're doing this for the first time. So I just want to throw that out there mostly for the community that there's, we appreciate any grace that you could provide us because we are, we're walking for the first time, but we're being forced to run.
Well, and I appreciate the work of so many on the team because today actually was evidence of, because we were ready and had things in place, it was still very time-consuming, but the systems worked as they needed to. And they worked, even as efficient as they were, they were still very elaborate and time-intensive, as I've mentioned. Last week, I know all of you as parents, but then also, all parents of our students received an initial email from us with information as well as templates of letters and communications we would share when we have positive cases in one or more of our schools. We also want to continue stressing that students and staff should not attend school if they have symptoms of COVID-19. Again, we do not view this as if, but obviously, it is a matter of when we will have positive cases in our building. This all seems rather simple, and it is really not when it comes right down to it. So as an example of one of those links provided by the county is information regarding of when a faculty or staff member can return to work. And it's important that everyone know the definitions or the if/then statements of when those decisions and how those decisions go about being made. And again, this was sent to all of our families last week and is available on our website as well as the Jefferson County Public Health Department's website. They also included some graphic representations of this information for students and staff alike, and then they provided this color-coded version as well. And as I mentioned, while what we do sounds very simple, information provided from the county and others can be complicated to navigate, which is not criticism, it's complicated information. Given this, it has prompted us to create a number of different things. As you heard in a couple of things earlier, the symptom tracker or a spreadsheet of data that allows us to efficiently gather information from families and staff in a very timely manner so that we know who people are, where they are, and what situations may be arising for us. We've solidified flow charts of responsibilities, who does what and when, and these are across many divisions, and many of us working collectively. Training supports for school office staff and others for efficiency and quick communication, again, related to close contact tracing and more. And then, Mandy Harper, our Director of Human Resources, actually created a bit of, remember Choose Your Own Adventure?
Yes.
A bit of that in a Google form that works you through this complicated slide and ends up telling you whether you should come to school or work that day. And those types of things have been really helpful, I think, in, A, understanding all of the different circumstances that people are facing, as well as trying to get information in a usable format for students, staff, and families alike. Students and staff who are in the same classroom for a cumulative 15 minutes or greater, or within six feet of a COVID-positive person, they will need to shift to a virtual learning environment, as we do have that happening now over the last couple of days in two of our buildings. Siblings of positively confirmed individuals shift to virtual learning for 14 days as well. However, one of the questions that we have is related to the siblings of students who were close contacts. And so it's only the siblings of those who had a positive test result themselves. So again, all of this information is there for families, and the communications that we'll be providing do help families navigate some of those nuances as well. And then, they provided guidance as to when a school building should shift to virtual learning, and that's if three positive cases for students or staff in a face-to-face learning environment are confirmed within one week, then the building would close for three days regardless of the student population size. And you may have heard this happened this week in Lake Mills. They reached that threshold, and they've closed for three days. I've had questions about the why three days. The duration of three days allows for contact tracing, as we mentioned, to take place with individuals who have tested positive, and also further allows for the potential presentation of symptoms among those who may have been exposed along the way. So when a school district should shift to virtual learning, again, as we talked about at our last meeting, is when you hit red or greater than 25. And again, at this point, this week, this point in time, Jefferson County is at 11.8. So again, as I've mentioned a couple of times, for us, I think it's less the county data perhaps. Obviously, that's critically important to us as well, but also care that families and staff and others have in coming to school if they have symptoms or they believe that they've been exposed to somebody who is positive for COVID-19. So as is customary, I bring requests to the board every time I meet with you, and these are not action items necessarily this evening, but I would ask that we maintain the face covering requirement post the executive order. So the governor's executive order does expire later this month. You have taken action as a board earlier in the summer to require face coverings of students and staff at school. So I'm reaffirming that that is great that we already have that in place, but it is definitely a need and the absolute pillar of how it is that we're operating right now. I might add that that has been a virtual non-issue for students and staff as well. Not that people like it, but people have definitely complied. We had asked that we continue not having community use of interior spaces in our buildings at this time. We will be gathering information on costing and identification of other impacts for potential future use. What would it cost for us to have those spaces cleaned adequately so that they can be ready for school use and those types of things? It's definitely something I'm sure we'll be hearing from our community over the next month or so as things get cooler, but definitely something we will want to be very careful in making sure our buildings are clean and safe for our primary purpose, which is of course, teaching and learning. And incidentally, I think I had 12 emails from other superintendents on this topic today, so it's clearly something everyone is grappling with. And then, consider whether or not lessening physical distancing is acceptable should the number of in-person students increase significantly into quarter two. So again, no alarm bells, but just something for you to be thinking about as we move forward. We have started to receive positive case information in our schools, and we have been working through, as I've mentioned, the close contact tracing protocols. We did communicate, or will be shortly communicating with all of our families, that we have had a positive case in Rockwell, and we have had a positive case at the middle school, which is perhaps not surprising. But we are shifting some staff and some students to a virtual learning environment that were deemed to be close contacts. So we will be transitioning tomorrow. Some have transitioned already today, and then they will be following whatever it is the county directs them to do as they move forward. So truly, as I've said before, if we want to keep our kids in school, we need to fully commit to the COVID-19 mitigation strategies. It really does take all of us, each individual one of all of us, all the time to make that happen. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of those topics I covered, or if there's anything else you're interested
I think you and I have been in such close contact, not necessarily this last week, but throughout this, that none of these things in here do I have any questions on necessarily because I've
Well, I try to be comprehensive.
Yeah, and we're very comprehensive. I appreciate it. One thing I would like to say, and this is kind of directed towards the community, and it was something that really just stuck out to me when we, when the discussion of the Rockwell or the positive cases came up, there was a lot of, there were a few very angry voices, if you will. They were angry at the people. It wasn't necessarily directed at us, it was more directed at the people who are sick. And I want to just remind the community that those people, whether or not they send their kids to school ill, there's still a sick person or a sick staff member. So it's, let's have a little compassion and remind ourselves that this person could very well be facing some serious health issues. It's not just about my weekend plans or, you know. We're in a very divided time right now, and I think this community does a very good job of being nice to one another, and I just want to, the dad in me just wants to remind everybody, you know, let's remember that when these positives are happening or these cases come up, that there is, there's a sick person involved here, and it's not just, not just a bad person, you know. It's a person who may, not everybody necessarily has the facilities or utilities to diagnose illness or even, you know, the time with their child. So, I mean, we knew this was going to happen, but I just wanted to, let's have a little compassion for the people who are directly affected, i.e. the sick people.
Well, clearly, I think we've all become very keenly aware that there are many, many people with COVID-19 that are asymptomatic, and it's not a matter of people all sending sick kids or staff coming ill or those types of things. I think we've seen overwhelming positive intention as people navigate through this. This is an inevitability, and the other thing I'd just like to underscore is that we are in a position where we are handling people's personal, private, and protected health information. And so even our communications that are going out today, I know someone was, let me know that they thought the vagueness of it was a little offensive, and really, that's about protecting people's privacy. And so we will, we will continue to let our community and those directly involved obviously know exactly what they need to do to be safe moving forward, but we'll never be in a place to release as much information as perhaps some people would like us to.
I'm sure Amy can explain all of that to us about how vague things have to be in the medical community since HIPAA.
Yes.
Yes, right. So that is, that's a good point to reiterate, Dr. Abbott, is that we are intentionally vague because we have to be backed by law.
We are working hard to provide every shred of information that we can to provide resources to families, especially as we transition them to virtual learning. So anything we can, we are certainly happy to share in a very timely manner. If I can just say again today, with the situation that popped up like literally this morning, all of those families, all of that contact tracing, all of that communication was executed by this afternoon, which is really outstanding work. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't take the 24 hours we're allowed to do that. It happened in a couple of hours, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. One last thing I just wanted to say, and I'll shut my mouth on this, but I know from personal experience that the people who get COVID oftentimes have a huge amount of guilt and shame for thinking that like, I'm this contagion that could potentially, you know, be lethal to people. So there is, we have to remember that too, that these people, they just got sick, you know. Sometimes it was from whatever kinds of behavior, but we deal with kids, and that's part of growing up. But there is a real like embarrassment and shame when it comes to being persecuted, or being kind of persecuted for being sick, you know. And I'm sure that we've all experienced that to some degree up here. And I just want to remind everybody, we are a compassionate community, and let's, let's keep it up. Let's keep that up. Thank you for the fantastic report, Dr. Abbott. Any more discussion from anyone else?
I actually wanted to just share a couple of comments. I have a child that's attending the MIR learning and doing virtual right now, and for anyone that hasn't or is nervous about it, it is completely different than spring, and I, we have had such a positive experience with it. It is a learning curve. It does require some, you know, parental support at home, especially for our younger learners. But I, I mean, kudos to the teachers and the staff and our IT people that made this possible. My kid is like so excited about it. I don't even know if I'll ever get him back into school physically. But I think it just, it says a lot about what this team has put in. And I'm not trying to make it all sunshine and flowers, but I had no idea what to expect as a parent going into it, and it has been a really, a positive experience for our family. So, thank you.
Great comments. That's good to hear. And you know, we oftentimes, as board members with students, we oftentimes have the opportunity to be the most critical because we know, we know what people are capable of. So when you first texted me the first day, I was so, I was so relieved. And then I got to experience it firsthand when my kids had to be home because they got sick. And so I had one of each. I had one kid that loved it and thrived and didn't want to come back. And then the other one, today, couldn't have been more or less, you know, he was about as disengaged as a kid could get, but I mean, he is sick. So, but I would agree. I would agree that we put in a lot of good work, and the results are showing themselves even this early on. Any other questions or comments before we move ahead? All right, seeing none, then we can go on to personnel, which is, I believe, a reallocation of some staff.
Yes, there is a report in, again, available to the public as well. It is just simply notes that we have moved a few position responsibilities around to accommodate what I just spent the half hour presenting to you regarding our interventionists, as well as our K-5 IMC specialists. And people have done amazing work in whatever we've asked them to do.
So we haven't seen a lot of difficulty or digging in heels or per se?
Since this started in March, it is not overstated to say that the accommodating nature of all of our staff and all of the groups has been stunning from day one and continues to be that way. And I would say, in our current, in our current state right now, the interest in doing new learning and offering new ways to support one another is equally exciting for people.
Yeah. I remember that was something that we, you and I had talked about very early on in this, about how you had seen like there might be this opportunity for, you know, kind of moving things and kind of getting out of old patterns necessarily. And I didn't know how you could see a bright silver lining at the time, but you did, so I'm proud, I'm proud to be part of that team. So it's good to hear that again, and that report is available in the agenda on Board Docs. We can move forward now to, unless there's any discussion, I'm sorry, I totally steamrolled that one, to the WASB CISA reports and legislative advocacy. I'm getting emails two or three times a day about various WASB actions that they're taking in, seminars. I have not signed up for any other seminars yet, but I do, if the newer board members see anything that you find interesting, I would recommend it. I went to quite a few of these things initially. The previous, two superintendents ago used to essentially drive you there, or literally drive you to the WASB seminars, and we would go through them. But some of them can be extremely helpful. Some of them can be a little bit over our heads, I think, sometimes, because not all of us are necessarily educators or administrators. But if you see something on there, check it out.
It is nice that they're all recorded, and you know, you can have it on even in the background and listen to some of the topics. And that's what I've been doing with a number of different things, and, you know, they're there. So you can always go back to them as well. Mrs. Haas would be very happy to help you get registered if there's something that requires registration as well.
All right, well, we can move on to items for future board meetings.
Yeah, there's several pages of them. So we will try to pick and choose what our October topics will be. We have the potential for looking at a staff sick leave policy update, also a COVID-19 addendum to the employee handbook, a district technology report, a behavioral mental health services report, as well as an enrollment report, which reminds me that tomorrow is our third Friday count. So tomorrow is the accounting of who we have enrolled and who we have in seats and what budgets will look like moving forward. So that will be exciting to see how things come out. Also, an academic and career plan, ACT results, Start College Now results, 2020, 2021. Also, an academic and career plan, ACT results, Start College Now results, 2020, 2021 budget adjustments, and I guess that's the end of the list. I'm guessing there'll be like a school report of some sort as well, but we'll see.
I highly encourage all of those people who reached out to us during the reopening debate or discussion to attend, attend to that meeting virtually or however, because there's going to be some important reports there, specifically the Behavioral Mental Health Services Report I'm a fan of, because that was one of the things that people told us that we needed to get kids back into school for, most importantly, was for their mental health. And so I think if that was something that was on your, your list of criterion for why we needed to reconvene schools, and I think it would be extremely helpful for you to be aware of the work that we're doing, the great work that we're doing, and might even give you some perspective on, you know, the possible additions of services in the future, like this is what we are going to be tasked with doing, as much as we are going to be tasked with teaching children, but we're, are teaching students, we're going to be also more and more going to be mental health providers for kids. So I think that's a, I know it sounds boring, but I think maybe you should attend if you're out there in the internet and listen to that, those reports.
I don't think Mrs. Hollenberger is ever boring.
Oh, no, I know, I wouldn't know, I'm just, but it doesn't sound like, you know, there's no, it doesn't say kapow or kaboom, and it's just mental health services report.
She was planning on a skit, but.
Oh, were you? Great. Oh, sweet. No, I mean, I love, I love your reports.
Let's just say it'll be very therapeutic.
Very therapeutic, great, well, that'll be good. Well, with all that levity out of the way, guys, we have one last motion, everybody's favorite one to entertain.
Be resolved.
No, that's you.
Education to do.
Here you go. Motion, and an attempted second by Mr. Nickram, but seconded by Mrs. Reynolds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? And that's it, folks, that's, that's the meeting. Thank you very much.